Testimonial of the presenters. Anybody that is here to present today, please be advised you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. Public comments, Mr. Garcia?
No.
No public comment. 1.6, Approval of Minutes of Emergency Meeting, February 5, 2024. Excuse me.
You have no corrections, so.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 1.7, Approval of Minutes of Emergency Meeting, February 9, 2024.
Motion to approve with one correction.
Yes, sir. What's that correction?
My name is Deport Alonso, Mr. Alvarado. I thought.
Alonso Carmona. Any other corrections? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
2.1, The acknowledgment and declaration of proclaiming February as Black History Month, whereas Black History Month established in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson is celebrated every February in recognition of achievements by Black Americans and all African descent in the United States, and whereas Dimmitt County acknowledges the long history of force and savement and institutional and structural racism towards Black people in the U.S. and its generational impacts, and whereas the county of Dimmitt recognizes significant contributions and huge advances that African-Americans have made and continue to make in the state of Texas and in the world in such areas as education, medicine, art, culture, public service, economic and development, politics, and human rights, we agree with, we see greatness of America in those who have risen above injustice and enriched our society. And whereas observance of Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to battle racism and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals, now therefore be it proclaimed that the county of Dimmitt does hereby recognize February 2024 as Black History Month. In witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of Dimmitt County to be affixed on this date, February 20 of 2024. Martha Alicia Gomez, Boxe Dimmitt County Judge. 2.2, Acknowledging and declaring the proclamation of February as American Heart Health Month, whereas the disease of the heart are the nation's leading cause of death and stroke is the fourth leading cause of death, and whereas cardiovascular disease claims the lives of more than 650,000 Americans each year, approximately one death per minute each year and nearly 52% of all are due to cardiovascular diseases, 60% are stroke-related death, and whereas too many Americans die each year because they are unaware that heart disease is the number-one killer and nearly as many die of heart disease, stroke, and all other cardiovascular diseases than the next four leading causes of death combined, including all cancers. Whereas February is designated as American Heart Month, and whereas taking action and making the right choices relating to proper nutrition, physical activity, and other lifestyle choices are essential to living a heart-healthy life, and now therefore, thank you, now therefore in recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against American heart disease and stroke, do hereby proclaim that the month of February 2024 be American Heart Month in the county of Dimmitt. We encourage all citizens by increasing awareness, speaking up about heart disease and stroke, and empowering women and men to reduce their risk for cardiovascular disease, we can save thousands of lives each year. In witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of Dimmitt County to be affixed on this 20th day of February 2024. Martha Alicia Gomez, Dimmitt County Judge. 2.3, Acknowledgment and Declaration to proclaim February as Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, whereas in 2010, the United States declared the month of February as National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month to raise awareness on teen dating violence and promote safe and healthy relationships among the youth. And whereas teens between the ages of 16 through 24 are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse, and a great, almost triple the nation average, whereas nearly half of the teens who experience dating violence report that instant abuse took place in school or a building in school or on school grounds, and where it is essential to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. And whereas the establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit young people, excuse me, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. And I therefore, Martha Alicia Gomez, Boxe Dimmitt County Judge, do by here proclaim February 2024 Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month throughout the county of Dimmitt. We urge all residents to work towards ending teen dating violence by working together in efforts to empower young people to develop healthy relationships, assisting victims in accessing the information and supporting services they need. 2.4, To review a First Responders' Community. Do we have representatives here from?
Yes.
Each of you please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm presenting a little community that we're trying to build for the first responders. There's a lot of things that are going to take place.
Can you tell me your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, Carter.
Carter.
Christian.
Christian Bartis. He's admin person. Papers in hand.
So, the community will be, will take the place at this address as presented. So, it's going to be a first responders' community. It will be, consists of tiny homes, beautiful little tiny homes, not just ordinary sheds or anything like that that we presented. Most of the county homes, which we would recommend that we put canning units for candles for some of the units. There'll be a gazebo, barbecue pits, a little clubhouse that, there's already a house and a premises, a law cabin home that would become a clubhouse that could hold if there's any first responders' communities. So, if there's any events that need to be presented for the first responders, they'll have a place to gather. So, the clubhouse would become, the law cabin home would become the clubhouse where they could have gatherings of anything that need to be for the first responders coming together. So, taking place at this property, we would need the community as well, we would need maybe landscapers, housekeeping, bring back to jobs for the community itself. And the whole thing about this is keep the first responders safe. I know they're always in line, they're in the red line all the time, and this would give them a community where there is safe keeping for them to be away from a hotel, away from the actual people they're probably dealing with. I don't know, but we all assume they're all racing in front of getaway for people, and that would give them a place of refuge where they could relax and do what they need to do and be ready for the next day.
If I may, we're hoping that this is the beginning of additional phases to create a community area of like-minded individuals who have life circumstances that are very similar and needs that are similar. And as I understand it, there's not a lot of lodging available at Quakeley and At ease or at least in close proximity. And he's had this on his heart for a while, to create a safe space for people that are being unsafe and create a community that is designed around their needs to make this more of a comfortable home for those individuals that need to be here for work.
So, we would have what they would need. For instance, if they needed dailies, maybe we could have 10 units that will be dailies. They come in and out or stay there for two, three days, and then we'll have the other sections as far as what would help out the law enforcement if they're, if they're going to be in this, this community for six months, we will give them a six-months stay with no penalties or anything like that. They're staying for four months, five months. If there's room, we will give it to them, and there won't be no stress of there's, there's a 10 months left in your, your needs or, you know, we'll be giving just for what they need. And we would have monthly gatherings where, once it all takes place, everything's happening, we'll have, once a month, we'll be doing lunch for the officers, first responders, getting everybody together, and of course Commissioners and the people who sees this growing, if there's things we need to fix or maybe a different phase that needs to be added to the community, this, this would be the ideal thing. And there is no name for this community yet. There is a list of names that we have, but I would like if it is approved, if the Commissioners and we could just come up with some name that brings the community together and unites and brings probably a little more life into Corizo and more people will be more stable being in a safe place. And what else would you want in a, in a small town? Law enforcement. That's, that's where the safety is to the community. That's where it all started.
And what was it? Where were we located at?
It's a 279 Hubs Lane. So, it's right behind like United Rentals. It's like in that little corner that does a cul-de-sac coming around. I think there's a welding facility there, supplies, I think it is. So, it's right agenda to that corner out there off of 277, I think it is. I think it's 2.7 miles from here. So, it's around a corner, it's not far at all.
I think you have years of experience in the building industry, so as far as, with rocks and cement, I'm unfamiliar with, just opening a can on a dream, we've done this stuff before as far as dealing with all the paperwork and the fallen codes and putting it together professionally. And it's not going to be slapped together in sheds, they're going to be nice units with a quality community tie-through in the wood. So, it's going to be a nice area and it's going to be a real community field to it. That's why we would like to be able to host the monthly events to bring that community together. And if there are others, I believe you mentioned there was someone that they had a meeting that needed to happen, a professional meeting, they had no space to do it, they couldn't find good locations. We'll have that.
Any other questions?
My question at this point is, I'm assuming you need some, some electrical here as you start the construction process, but what about for gray water and freshwater distribution? Do you have your own? Would it be self-contained or is it going to be tapped into either city or county?
So, there is a well ready on that property, so I have two wells on that property. One's a pretty good-sized well and one is the one that feeding to the actual law cabin home that will become the clubhouse. And I already spoke to Real Brink electricity, so after the Commissioners' Court, everything is approved, all goes right to them, give them the deposit until they start doing the layout for what we have proposed and take it from there. But yes, it is being, as it is, taken care of outside.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And there is a gravel road, which I think is fine enough going to that property, it's just around a corner. I think like half of it is paved and some of it's not. So, if this gets approved, I mean, it's something, maybe we could talk and I could help out on something once the community starts going and just keep a smooth road where it's coming in into my place. But my property, we will have solid concrete, whatever is needed, it will be concrete. Officer will park on top of concrete, they'll drive off on top of concrete.
Pedro, I might get together with you because that's in my area.
Okay.
See what time it's on.
Great.
So, today, Mr. Ray Elliott set for information as a presentation to, for us to understand better, educate ourselves on exactly what you guys were trying to do. So, we'll have to get through our legal team and pass that through there, and then we'll have our staff contact you for any follow-up questions, so then we can put it back on the agenda for actual approval.
Okay. That sounds great.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
2.5, The recognition of Mean Purple Band State finalist Aiden Longoria on percussion. Dimmitt County Commissioners' Court, including myself, would like to at this time recognize Aiden Longoria for his amazing skills in percussion with the Mean Purple Band. Let it be known to everyone that's here today and everyone that gets to see our YouTube, it is an honor for me to be able to commend this young man. He did advance to state. That is no easy task and no easy feat. He did place third in his class, in class 4A. So, I wanted to make sure that we recognize our youth. After all, you know, we're here to, to continue to promote our youth because at the end of the day, they are the ones that are, that are going to come behind us. So, Aiden, we are so very proud of you. I'm very proud of you, and I'm so happy that you're, I reached out to your, to your dad and your mom and, and took this opportunity to recognize you in front of the people that are here today. So, with that being said, we're going to go down to the bottom, and if you don't mind coming to the front so we can take a picture of you, but before we do that, if I can get a big round of applause for Aiden.
The honor, if I may add, he's got a unique talent. He's one of the few tenors in the state that his class grades hold him upside down and he plays that. He's known by his peers throughout the state as the upside-down tenor player.
It's only a few people know that. Now, there's some more, the whole county.
And also to Mr. Sanchez right here, his band director, who is also part of the team. We have your son back here too, right?
Yes, sir. That's a profession teacher.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you so much, and congratulations. If you want to come into the picture, we'd be awesome.
That's my normal smile.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
3.1, Approval of Bonds. We have no bonds, there is no action. 3.2, excuse me, to discuss inappropriate action, to review and submit quotes to insurance on repairs to residents of Olivia Trevino for damages caused by incident that occurred on March 30, 2021 with the Dimmitt County Sheriff's Office. Commissioners, as you can see and if you can recall, we did have a Commissioners' Court meeting in regards to there being some external and internal damage to the property of Ms. Olivia Trevino from Big Falls, Texas. As you can see, attached to your packages, you have three quotes that have been submitted by Mrs. Trevino. It's my distinct understanding, Sheriff, if you can please come forward?
Please speak.
Yes, ma'am. I only have three here. Yes, ma'am, we only have three that were submitted to our office. We only have three, Ms. Trevino, that were submitted to the office. It's my distinct understanding, Sheriff, in speaking to you in a conversation that you and I had, that the last time we were here, we had discussed of the possibility in inquiring from the District Attorney's Office and to looking into the Victims Assistant Program. My understanding from speaking to you, you advised me that she did not qualify for that program.
They don't cover loss if they have a damage.
So, with that being said, the alternative that we had discussed when we were here the last time, if you Commissioners can recall, was that we would have Mr. Pareda or Mr. Ortiz follow up in inquiring with their insurance to see if the insurance would at that point cover the cost. So, at this point, we requested that Ms. Trevino submit these three quotes for approval and then forward that quote to the insurance company, Dimmitt County Insurance, to see if it would be eligible for coverage. I understand that this has been three years since the incident, correct? So, next month will be three years. So, I know this is a pressing and a time-sensitive matter, so I've discussed with Mr. Pareda, and we are trying to be effective and efficient when we try to submit these policy claims. So, at this juncture, I would like for the Commissioners to review the proposed quotes by Ms. Trevino, and is there any questions? Commissioner.
Mr. Trevino, I'm pretty sure you're aware that once we sell this, that's it. Let's say, for example, you don't like the work that they did or whatever, we got nothing to do with it. When the carpenter finished the work, a lot of people complain, well, the job you did is not what I wanted, so you have to take care of it by yourself. We cannot get involved anymore. You understand?
Once they replace the window, like I say, the window, once the window, they just say there's anything else, like, you know what, you know, he didn't, he left, you know, a broker or something, that's why they put the bid on there.
His apartment, right?
Right. So, is there still anything I'm trying to get for you to understand, that once it's done, work clear?
Do you have to decide it yet?
Today we decide, ma'am. It has to be approved through the Commissioners' Court. So, you submit this to our office, and then when we come to Commissioners' Court, they have the opportunity to ask you questions or to ask questions in regards to these quotes, and then collectively as a, as a group, we decide which quote we go through. Once we do that, this quote will be forwarded to the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office, those of both which deal with our insurance policies. They will submit that to the insurance company, and at that point, the insurance company will then advise us whether or not they will accept the claim. If they do not accept the claim, then we have to come back to Commissioners' Court to make another decision collectively as to how we're going to proceed forward with your case.
Can you tell me which three you have there?
I have one for Danny Sanchez Construction, I have one from Robert Iurabazo Carpentry Services, and then I have one from Raoul Carillo. Other questions, Commissioners?
The only question that I can kind of think of is, once we approve this, meaning that Mr. Pareda is here, we know how this is going to be financed. Do they know? Or do you know how we're going to pick this?
I would recommend that if we're going to be discussing the possible claim, that we do it under executive session.
We can go into executive session. At this time, I'm going to respectfully request for everyone to step out as we are going into executive session regarding this matter. Thank you.
I need it here. We're discussing.
Mr. Pareda, was it more? So, you can turn off the.
Because they go with the, because there is a.
It's on, but I don't want to turn it on.
Well, the thing is, we have to figure out what I'm missing. There seems to be.
Yes, a couple more things.
What dance with it? It's a picture. Here it is.
Did it sound better?
I'm probably guessing if the audio is cleared up.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Test one, test one. That's loud. Test one, test one.
Who want to turn it off more? Can you turn off the camera as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Garcia, the time is 10:50 from executive session. I will entertain a motion to authorize the county judge's office to forward the three estimates to the county auditor's office and/or the HR, Mr. Oscar Ortiz, to forward them to the insurance company so that the insurance company can execute the paperwork for a claim. At that point, when the claim is received by the insurance company, they'll follow up to see how they're going to approve. They're going to send an adjuster, the normal process that it takes for a claim, and then at that point, if there's any information or anything that's required from Ms. Trevino, we'll go ahead and contact you, Ms. Trevino. So, right now, the purpose of today is so that we can send these three quotes to the insurance and file that claim and see how the insurance wants to proceed with this claim, okay? I'll entertain that motion. Motion by Commissioner Uranda, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Trevino. Have a good day. 3.3, Discussion on Appropriate Action Approval to Get a Full Refund for a Birthday Party on February 3, 2024 at the Placita, Sarah Rios. for a birthday party on February the 3rd, 2024 at the Placita, Sara Rios.
Judge, this issue has been resolved with the Rios, so there'd be no action taken on this.
The court is going to remove this item from the agenda, no action. Let the record reflect, Mr. Garcia, that this issue has been resolved. I'm going to go out of order, Mr. Garcia, and I'm going to call item 3.30, discussion appropriate act, item, excuse me, discussion appropriate action regarding approval for FCH Agent Clarissa Munoz to attend the Texas A&M Agro Lab Health Summit Southeast Region 2024 on March 20th, 22nd in Fredericksburg, Texas.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, is there any questions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. That's all you have? 3.31, discussion appropriate action approval for county extension agent Alyssa Cruz to attend the Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show on March 6th through the 8th in Mercedes, Texas.
I am here on behalf of Alyssa because she is in San Antonio right now with our 4-H members who are showing at the livestock show in San Antonio. And the next Commissioners' Court will be March 7th, so she would have to leave before that Commissioners' Court happens. So we wanted to see if this was okay, if I am here on her behalf.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any further discussion?
I am. I'm going to go. When you go to this livestock shows, is it because some of our students are going out there or?
Yes. So I believe for San Antonio, we have 15 4-H members who went to show and are still showing. And then for the Rio Grande Valley one, I believe we have 30. That's why it's just a couple days.
School week?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
3.4, Mr. Garcia, the item is to be removed from the agenda. It was presented this morning by Mr. Villarreal as an informational item. 3.5, discussion appropriate action monthly report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Guerrero Perez, for the month of January 2024.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Are there any questions of Ms. Perez?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any further discussion?
Judge, last, last one in this, in this one, to you. We think you can now, sentences for illegal. It's not just for false arrest or anything, but illegal materials. So, okay, just so I know, just a little.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.6, discussion appropriate action approval for JP 1 and 6 Sonia Guerrero Perez and Deputy Clerk Clelia Alfaro to attend the OmniBase Training and Education Classes for the FTA Program on March 22nd in Austin, Texas.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.7, discussion. Thank you, Judge.
I just wanted to share with the Commissioners that on Operation Identification, as y'all are aware, a month ago or so, Texas State University was here and they were exhuming bodies for identification purposes. And I received notice that one of them was identified and is being reunited with their families in Mexico. So that is the whole purpose of the bodies being exhumed is to get proper
Identification.
Identification and have closure for the families. And it is part of, we have to send DNA to the state and these were done prior. So we're just trying to get them back to their families. So I was very pleased to find out that we were able to give closure to a family. So I just wanted to share with y'all and thank y'all for helping with that.
Are they coming back or?
I think that they have done everything so far. I'm not sure, I haven't spoken to Dr. Sparkly. I will follow up with her, but I think that it's a great thing that they're doing. They've been working in Marin County, Brooks County, Dimon County, just around the area. So I just wanted to share that with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge. 3.7, discussion appropriate action monthly report from JP Precinct 2, Mr. Alberto Esquivel, for the month of December 2023 and January 2024.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Are there any questions of Judge Esquivel?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.8, discussion appropriate action approval for JP Deputy Clerk Alicia Sanchez to attend the OmniBase Training and Education Class for the FTA Program on March 22nd, 2024. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
3.9, discussion appropriate action monthly report from JP Precinct 3, Ms. Maticei Armandes, for the month of November, December 23, November and December 2023 and January 2024. Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? Go ahead, go ahead.
Judge, I'm the same note, not that I'm thinking, but by precincts, I'm saying, see, did you get it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval for JP 3 Deputy Clerk Esther Armandes to attend the 2024 Experience Court Personnel Seminar on May 13th through the 15th in San Marcos, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
3.11, discussion appropriate action monthly report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Martinez, for the month of January 2024.
Morning, Your Honor.
Good morning. I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
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 Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor.
3.12, discussion appropriate action monthly report from District Clerk Ms. Marisela Gonzalez for the month of January 2024.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners.
Good morning, ma'am. Ms. Gonzalez, was there any grand jury or cases presented for January?
No, ma'am. We are scheduled to have grand jury the 21st tomorrow, actually.
Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion?
Judge, just wanted to confirm that we are scheduled for that meeting with Mr. Pareda, regarding the postage meeting for this afternoon.
We are going to meet with Mr. Pareda. As a matter of fact, the whole second floor, thank you very much. Thank you.
Judge, ma'am. Ms. Gonzalez, you're going to start working on your building today.
Oh, great.
You're starting, today you start putting that rooftop and that side, you know.
Thank you.
It should be done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.13, monthly report from County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia for the month of January 2024.
For the average month, Judge, Commissioners. Cleveland County Court, which we're looking to include a little tiny, just white tread cars instead of them.
Manually. Any questions of Mr. Garcia? Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion?
Judge, I have one coming and I'm just going to put it out there, okay? Of course, we started early voting and with these new extended early voting hours, my staff is going to be running into a overtime. For example, we swing, of course, 8 to 5, but this Saturday it's 7 to 7. Sunday, 9 to 3. The following week, the last week of early voting, 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. So I guess what I want to put out there, here is my staff, my regular staff, as far as, once they go past their regular hours, they'll hit beginning comp time.
Correct.
So instead of comp time, it can be paid. That's a question.
I think that goes back to the discussion we had a couple weeks ago, that if it's not an emergency, they cannot, it'll be comp time. Mr. Garcia, did you hire election workers as well to work?
For early voting, yes. Of course, elections, clerks are hired by parties. They pay their salaries.
My question is in regards to your concern about having your employees, Dimet County employees, being there extended hours. The reason for that is because you don't have enough election employees? Or what would be the cause for you to have to keep your employees having to work after hours?
Hire an additional deputy clerks, early voting clerks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.14, discussion appropriate action monthly report from Dimet County Fire Assistant Chief, Mr. David Torres, for the month of January 2024. Mr. Garcia, let the record reflect that that is a typo and it should indicate 2024, not 2023.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Mr. Torres.
Can you see a copy of the recording now, packet?
I don't have it. It was not submitted.
It was a little one thing, but I think you're, that's all.
Thank you.
This is, this is a little bit important, is it?
I'm sorry?
This is a little bit important, is it?
No. It's, it's, it's coming before February.
I was inquiring about the issue that Mr. Carmona had asked me about. Do we have any questions of Mr. Torres?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, any discussion?
Judge.
Yes.
If, maybe we can include the, from Mr. Torres, illegal burning, so we are aware of it. We only hear from the judge, I'm sorry, from Commissioner Carmona mentioned it. So whenever you have any illegal burning, just put it on there. Okay, whichever, whichever call or wherever, whichever's on the law, I'll go ahead and label it as illegal burning. They were aware, because I wasn't aware that. Yes. They knew all the issues. Yes. Citation. Yes. On the top, of course, you can just see how many citations were issued that month. I'll go ahead and, yeah, I'll put that on there.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. 3.15, discussion appropriate, appropriate action monthly report from County Commissioners for the month of January 2024. Do we have any questions or comments in regards to Commissioner Precinct 1, Jose Urenda? No questions? No comments? Precinct 2?
Judges, as I mentioned before in the previous meetings, we're still waiting on the G W O site to come and finish Chohini Lane and County Road 1557. They left it, I showed you these pictures where they left their areas. Then there's washboards on the road, so their equipment broke down. So they said as soon as they get it, only they'll come and fix it.
Is that, was that part of the warranty, Commissioner?
We haven't even paid that, that part on them, waiting for them to.
Okay, so it's not.
We haven't accepted the road.
So it's not completed yet?
No. And also, we're finally working on County Road 173. We got that rap material from the company, so we're having to break it down and bring it closer. And then we go and, my crew goes and sits down on County Road 172. And it's five miles of road that we'll be doing.
Any questions in regards to monthly report for Precincts 3 and 6? Comments?
Judge, we're about done with Hendrickson. And we're starting on, we did Parker Loop and also Sunny Acres. We did half of them. We borrowed some material from Commissioner Loa. So, and then I want to, I'm going to present to the Commissioners' Court because I want to do midway, midway, County Road.
Any other questions, comments regarding Precinct 3 and 6? I won't, you have another comment?
Judge, if we ever get an approval of the general agreement, it's Peter Wilson.
It's on here, Commissioner?
Okay, because in order to help us, you gotta have that.
It should be on here.
That's what I was looking for.
You mean to help him with what the lights or what the...
Everything, we have to have a...
Well, no, I understand we have to have an interlocal agreement, but I guess it got... It's not on here, we'll put it on the next one, Commissioner. I thought it was on here. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.16 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Purchase Two Water Pumps for the Brundage Waterwell.
Judge, these water pumps are required to freshenize the system that distributes water within the community of Brundage and local ranches. These water pumps are actually part of the upgrading process that's being performed to that particular location, however, the water pumps were not part of the expenditure grant, so we have that come from our budget. The pressure tank and the storage tank and everything else is part of the grant, but the water pumps were not, so that's why we're having to have to do that.
Are there any questions?
Commissioner, when you purchase them, you're gonna do the work yourself, or are you, are you gonna bring it back and include the labor to install them?
No, the, the crew will, the water, the utility crew will, will be installing them, as well as the pressure. They, we'll, we'll be installing, the crew will be installing them.
Right, right, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because if not, you can put in the agenda for them to install.
We just need to purchase them, and then we'll replace, the concern at this point, Commissioner, is that summer's coming up, and we only have one pump operating right now, and that pump overheats and goes down. We'll be in a...
No problem, I just wanted to make sure that...
Okay.
Are there any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.17 Approve to Use a PND Consulting LLC for Consultation Services as Needed for the Golf Course.
Judge, this item is placed on the agenda as the advice from our auditor. He stated that because PND is actually a consulting company, we would have to push the agenda as a contract, even though it's not a contract. This is on a month-to-month basis as needed. If we don't, if we don't call him in to monitor or, or give us advice, we don't pay him, but Mr. Pereira thought that it'd be something that...
Correct.
Yeah, so that's why it's on the agenda, for I guess...
So what's the fee for this consulting?
It's fifteen, it's fifteen hundred a month if we call him, and he comes down twice a week. When, what's, what's happened with this, Judge, honestly, is this, this individual is very knowledgeable when it comes to the fairways, the greens, the, the particular maintenance to these greens, and he has done a lot from when we started using him to now. Our greens are actually some of the best compared to Eagle Pass, to Valley, even Pleasanton and One Golf Course in the ring.
So we have him already?
Well, we, I, we, we've called him in, three months since the past year.
But we haven't paid him, that's why we're bringing it to Commissioner's Court.
No, we paid, we paid him twice.
I know, but...
We paid him twice.
We looked at the contract, it wasn't there, so that's why we're...
On professional services.
That's why we're bringing it back, because we didn't see anything in the, that it was approved or contracted.
So you haven't paid him?
Uh, this last month, no. For the last two months.
But he hasn't been paid of it, because that was the question, right?
Well, I'm confused, because he's saying he hasn't gotten paid, so he's essentially doing it for free.
No.
And you're saying he's been paid.
Well, no, he was paid, it's not, but the last one we stopped, we haven't paid the last invoice.
Why not?
Because we looked for the contract, and there wasn't anything to prove.
It's on month-to-month basis.
But regardless, you need a contract.
My question would be then, if it's not a contract, then we, we need to ask for bids, or?
It is.
Professional services?
It's, it's professional services. Yes, since the amount is, do we need to ask for bids, or?
No, it's not over fifty thousand, so you don't have to pay it out.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because we don't want another company calling and saying, why didn't you pay me?
Well, that's why everything that you're, any services have to be, go to Commissioner's Court.
So anytime you use anybody on the professional services, they have to come to Commissioner's Court? Really? So what, what do we, what do we need to do to just approve it?
Well, is he gonna sign a contract?
There is no contract.
That's why...
Well, there is no contract, there's gonna be no contract, a contract would tie us into him, and we don't want to be tied up to him.
Well, no, no, you're gonna, whenever he comes, he's gonna charge you whenever you use his service.
That's right, that's what he does.
It, it, it's, it's equivalent or the same as when we, how we use Dan Hill, Dan Hill's professional services, there's no contract, there should be no contract, the law, the government code specifically says when it's a professional services, there is no contract, and the Commissioner's Court can release that person at any given moment by a majority vote.
Actually, there is a contract with Dan Hill.
Well, there shouldn't be. The government code says professional services, you don't have to have a contract.
Well, it's a contract on a, on a minority basis, so...
Okay, well, then we need a contract for Commissioner Urenda's. It's the same thing, it's professional services, Carlos.
I understand. What do you want, Commissioner?
They need to know the amount that we're paying out.
Correct.
We're seeing the fifty hundred per month, if we use him, if we don't use him, we don't...
Yeah, well, that could be stayed in the contract, you know?
Well, that's it, that's what the contract is.
But then...
Whenever you use him, it's just like an attorney, he's gonna bill you just the hours that he works, do you have to put an attorney on the contract? We have to go through the...
You all said we did when I first became a judge?
Yes.
When we wanted Mr. Martinez?
Yes, every time an attorney has to be hired for anybody, so if you want, are not protected, you've got to have a contract, anything has to have a contract.
So let's assume that he comes down and he does work, and then the greens turn out bad or whatever, on his, on his, on his suggestion, what do you do then?
That's exactly why you do the contract, because then you can go against him.
Right now, he's doing nothing.
Correct.
Right, right, contract labor.
So there's, there has to be a contract.
Right, so that...
And we don't have it.
Mr. Perez, you just told us more than I can. Go ahead, but we need a contract, or we don't?
We do need a, we need to approve, so...
But you told Commissioner Urenda he did not need one.
You just said approve it. I have to go to the way to do it, you said just approve it.
Oh, you need to, you approve him as a contract to do it, with him out.
I think, I think we're, we're getting confused, because you're telling, you're telling us that we need a contract. Written contract. Yes, a written contract, but you're saying to go ahead and approve so that he can get paid. We don't have, we don't have a contract, obviously.
I mean, technically, you just have to approve the claim document, he built a claim document.
No.
Yes.
We have to prove what he's gonna be doing for you all. So you have, okay, so...
So Commissioner Alonso uses Mr. Martinez every day to do electrical, that's a professional service, we don't have a contract with him?
Yeah, you brought it to Commissioner's Court.
No, we have not.
Okay, then...
No, we have not.
So it was brought up...
See, so it's contradictory.
It was brought up in the old, with the old administration, where he was supposed to be doing only the work, the board patrol, so there is notes, and there are minutes where we did approve.
But there's no contract, Commissioner, he's just said right now that he has the contract, he was not approved to do electrical for Commissioner Alonso.
Okay, all right, will you, will you approve it through his court, and at the amount, at the rate, that's all we need, I mean, that's already approved, that's the contract.
What he's gonna do and at what rate?
Yeah.
And is there any liability issues? No, we need to see a written contract that covers those issues, because if somebody else comes up and say, well, who are you using, your greens are bad? So you know the gentleman who's already in a contract for three years, you remember?
Yes.
And he was in contract... And, and it wasn't being, it wasn't turning out good for the, for the county road, the government, so we didn't wait, we extinguished the contract, and he left and went to do something different.
Because he terminated the contract.
Right. That was a different contract, he was managing the golf course. Right. It's a consulting contract. Right. Ask him, he has a consulting contract, there's a difference. He's not actually running the golf courts this time, he's just coming in to give us advice. Consulting, right. So I have, okay, I'll ask him for a contract, but what about the other, the other three invoices you already paid?
Or we did that. So we got to...
That's convenient.
Okay. Judge, if I may, put this out again, putting this out there, I think all this stems from the, what I call the infrogrammer, for example, to use PND, I mean, instead of to use, put the word up there, contract, agreement, not to use.
Well, to be honest with you, Mr. Garcia, when we drafted up this agenda, we drafted exactly as it's submitted to our office. So Commissioner Urenda's staff submitted it with that language grammar, and we just copy and paste.
I copied and pasted from... Right, and that's why it basically was to hire, so that we could...
So essentially, it goes back to Mr. Pereira, because Commissioner Urenda copied and pasted from Mr. Pereira.
Right. So what did you say?
Okay, motion to table this?
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona to table this item, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.18 Discussion and Appropriate Action Discussion and Appropriate Action to Purchase Warning Lights for 2024 GMC Sierra for Precinct Two Commissioner Vehicle.
Judge, I had placed this one, this item on the last couple of meetings that we leave, if I'm not correct, if I'm correct, if not, there might be a change on my statement, but we, we did submit two proposals, the third one did not respond. The only thing I'm asking is if we can go here locally, because the other ones in San Antonio, and if there's something wrong, goes wrong with the warning system, we have to take it to San Antonio, and this gentleman, the local, is here from Crystal City.
And with these lights, Commissioner, what is, what is the purpose of these lights?
For to slow our people down on the county roads, and give them a warning, you know, warning light, that they're stop working out there, not stopping them or anything like that, just to slow them down, because they don't pay attention to our signs or speed limit, and I'm afraid one of these days they're gonna run into machinery.
And these are lights that we've always put on our Commissioner vehicles?
No, I carry one that, that's a light bar, but I would like to make it more presentable than what I carry.
A strobe light, a strobe light.
Yeah, there's strobe lights.
We have, yeah, we have the LEDs strobes on our, on our utility country.
Yeah, we have them also, but when I'm out there, they're driving like...
You have lights in your Commissioner vehicle, truck?
We all have them on our trucks for road work.
No, you specifically as the Commissioner, your truck, you have one in your truck?
No, we pay three hundred and fifty dollars for it.
Okay, well, this is two thousand four hundred and ninety.
Well, this is going around the truck with headlights and, what, the grill and the back lights, and then there's a little light bar. And the more we fix the road, the faster they go.
And this is coming out of what budget, Commissioner?
Um, it's coming out of our repairs. On, on the trucks, vehicles, I'm sorry.
On repair vehicles?
Yes.
So you're requesting for us to go with the two thousand four hundred and ninety as opposed to the one thousand six hundred and nine?
Yes, ma'am, being that he's local, and if, like I said, if, if they break down, then we gotta go to San Antonio, leave that truck up there, and then have to come back, and then go back. The gentleman is going home for his work, he does different counties, Savala County, it's every, everybody locally a lot, and he's good on his work and warranty.
Are there any other questions? Now I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? I'm gonna oppose Mr. Garcia. Motion carries. 3.19 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Reduce the Speed Limit on Industrial Boulevard from forty-five miles to twenty miles an hour by Precinct Three.
Judge, as you know, this is not part of Precinct Three or Six, but, you know, it is kind of fast for everybody to go by there, we got the park and all the children, so I would recommend it.
So that we can put signs up there, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
On his request, it says forty-five to thirty, and then somebody scratched it up to twenty.
Is it twenty or thirty, Comish, did you want? It says to reduce the speed limit on Industrial Boulevard from forty-five to thirty, but then it scratched out to say twenty.
Say twenty.
Twenty, he's asking for twenty. Yeah, I know, mine has it, I mean...
If we can do that, officer, if it's our county road, we can reduce to twenty?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't have to ask anybody.
No, it's the county road. You can, you can do that. I'm going to request a motion to reflect, Mr. Garcia, for the discussion of appropriate action to reduce the speed limit on Industrial Boulevard from forty-five miles to twenty miles per hour, and to authorize Commissioner Juan Carmona to purchase the signs and install such signs at the proper locations of that county road.
Also, for the record, we're gonna put up, slow down two burning plates, that way it'll be more, more valid.
Is that gonna be your motion, Comish?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Urenda, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.20 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Purchase Warning Lights for 2023 Toyota Tundra for Precinct Three Commissioner Vehicle.
They've discussed, Judge, I just want to, so we can be safe out there, also...
You're having the same quotes as Commissioner Alonso? There's the same quotes? There's there's him.
Yes, ma'am. Also, Sheriff, thank you for sending the men out there when we request them, but if they can stay a little longer, please, they go there in about ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and they take out back, so I guess they get bored, so just tell them to stay there for an hour or two, till we, I'm pretty likely somebody, let you there in the midway, getting a lot of, like you there. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
Same reason on the motion for accepting the higher bid, because of the convenience of the double vendor? Because if we don't do that, they'll say you did not accept the lower bid, we don't want that. Is that part of your motion, spoken, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? I will oppose Mr. Garcia. Motion carries. 3.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding No Discharge of Any Firearms at Any County Park for Public Safety, Precinct 3.
Yes, ma'am. I think there are a lot of complaints from people that they're fishing and people go and target practice, they throw guns in the water and then they start shooting. So I would like, but I don't know, I just put it down, Precinct 3, twice to improve Precinct 6, because Midway and La Poneca and all the other are in Precinct 6.
I think in regards to that, Commissioner, the motion should reflect no discharge of any firearms at any county park for public safety. And just disregard Precinct 3. It's just that Precinct 3 is the one that requested the item?
Sponsored it.
Exactly, correct. I think when she, she puts that, when she puts that dash, it's just to say that you're the one sponsoring or requesting the, the item on there, but the true request is to reflect no discharge of any firearm at any county park in Dimon County. I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
One addition, if the set includes Espantosa Bridge, we had shootings out there also. Does that consider a part of the county?
That is considered a county park.
All right, the Espantosa where people fish, because some people are.
I think that's what he said, that that's where he's getting the most complaints from.
Midway was the complaint.
Midway, Espantosa, and what is it, the 85, we call it 85 Park. Has been Indian, you know, but there's a slope, but just pass the slope bridge, then always to the river.
I had a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona and then I had a second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.22 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Advertise for Repairs of Roof at Middle Rio Ground Development Council Building. Commissioner, the roof. I'll ask it when we get closer to the time. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.23 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval Airport Manager's Contract Agreement. This item was tabled, Commissioners at the last two Commissioners Court for the review of this contract. It has been reviewed and I am going to ascertain to the court that we can approve this contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda.
There's some changes that need to be done to that. For starters, for starters, do you need?
Yes, Sheriff. That also would be the contract. At the very first paragraph, at the end, it doesn't include the manager's name. I think that's important. In section 1A, you need to change the date, the expiration date to 2005, you have 2004, second day of.
I think this is the wrong, the wrong one that was added to this thing, because they had fixed it already. We had asked them to fix it.
And then on page 3, D, C and D, and special just for Pereira, sort of replaced with providing for the manager to do that certain fees and we paid $95,000, so. Of course, my concern about the officer president, there's gonna be some correction for the consolidate those two sections. The first one, you see, was saying except for that.
Hey, I can hear you, Mr. Gonzalez.
There's some conflict on paragraph 3 with C and D, and I don't have it marked with the other paragraph, and B in section 4. So what had proposed that the fees that he would be paying the county would be consolidated to C and D and remove that one paragraph, so it makes it clear what fees he's obligated to pay the county and then. Correct? That was it.
I wasn't aware of that. Mr. Pereira didn't advise me and I didn't hear from you either, so.
Just talked to him this morning.
Okay, but if you just talked to him this morning, then you should have requested for item to be tabled.
Well, it's not tabled, just through those corrections. Everything's okay except for those corrections.
Excuse me?
Subject to the changes, correct?
Have you had an opportunity to review that, Mr. Martinez? Do you have any problems or questions regarding those corrections?
No, I haven't seen it, so I wouldn't bear to make these tables.
I have a motion to table. I have a motion to table by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Do we retract our motion?
Yes, sir, please.
Judge, I'd like to retract my motion from approving the contract.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Uranda, you're retracting your second. Mr. Martinez, we're gonna go ahead and table it. I'm gonna get with Mr. Gonzalez or Mr. Pereira and get those corrections. And then you can come to my office and we can give that to you and then we'll put it back just out of the abundance of caution, okay?
During that time, having that date, like, they also just fixed it.
It should revert back to the starting date of the.
Yes.
That's what we discussed.
We'll get that to you. I apologize. Commissioner Juan Carmona, motion to table. I had a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. And we'll get that to you by the, I'll get with Mr. Gonzalez to see what his availability is and we'll get that to you by the end of this week. Thank you, sir. 3.24 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of Webb County Medical Examiner's Contract. This was submitted by, I mean, Mr. Pereira at the Audit Chair's Office. To my distinct understanding, everything remained the same with the exception that they included an increase in price for individuals that are obese. The price went up. I'll tell you right now. It went up $50. So if you were, you were obese, the county used to pay 200, now it's 250. It's the only, this medical examiner, it's, I mean, Dimon County had had this medical examiner for over 10 years. I did do some research and I tried to look outside of Webb County Medical Examiner. The nearest one would be Bear County. And Mr. Pereira and I looked at those prices and they were almost doubled to triple these prices. When we looked at it, that was, you know, the, the hard thing about it, Commissioners, that right now with all the immigrants that we have dying in Dimon County, they charge us a daily fee to hold those bodies. And so that's what's been a big cost for Dimon County. We did apply through the Operation Lone Star Grant for a mobile morgue, which is, we would have it housed here somewhere near the Sheriff's Office. However, it was not, that specific line item was not approved. However, on Monday, when I was in McAllen for the border, we met with the Governor's Office there and they did advise us that they're doing the Operation Lone Star Grant. It's coming up again with a deadline of March the 14th, Mr. Pereira, March 14th. And they were requesting, bless you, bless you, they were requesting that the counties participating, which we're one of them right now, to request up to 5 million, because at the special session, they were given an additional 200 million for OLS. So hopefully, we can get Mr. Gonzalez's blessing and reapply, because we need a letter of support from the county attorney and try to apply for the mobile morgue again. Because right now, one of our biggest costs for medical examiner is that we're having to pay Webb County to hold those bodies on a daily. What is a daily pay, Mr.?
I don't remember.
Yeah. But yes, sir, I did, I did do some research, Mr. Pereira and I, and we looked at adjoining counties. The nearest county for medical examiner was Bear County and their prices were almost doubled than what Webb County is charging us. Do you know of any other medical examiners?
No, Your Honor, the only issue we had with Webb County also is, is when the medical examiner is needed to testify in this report, she's not available or is reluctant to come down, so I had to speak to her and sometimes.
Correct. Correct.
And that's where our district will cases.
And unfortunately, we don't have another medical examiner near us other than Webb or Bear. And like I said, Bear, the prices were doubled to triple from what Pereira and I researched.
My rule on the next grant is gonna be subject to what we hear on, on our amendments. They're gonna grant the changes that the Honorable Judge requested, and I don't know when that deadline's gonna be. I hope it is before March 14th.
No, we'll get, we're, we're gonna get it this week, Mr. Gonzalez.
The amendments were already done.
Yes, but have they approved it?
Yes.
Are the departments that request those changes gonna receive the money?
Yes, they already, they already approved their amendments, yes.
I will apply again and give us the $1 sign all over. Why waste our time? You're not gonna ask us to apply and then provide us with funding, so don't waste our time. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Webb County Medical Examiner contract?
Judge, to answer my question, I was gonna ask you what I went to our freezer.
Yes, well, no, so we did apply for that freezer, Commissioner, for the, it's the mobile morgue. I know Brooks County has it, which has saved them a lot of money, which would save Dimon County a lot of money, but like I said, they, the Governor's Office only granted us a certain amount of money. When Mr. Gonzalez makes the comment about the $1 sign, there was some request that we requested and the Governor's Office granted us a dollar. They gave us a dollar. And so with that being said, there was a reduction in how much money the Governor's Office gave. But as I mentioned, when I went to the conference on Monday in McAllen, they assured us that they added 200, $200 million to that OLS fund. So with that being said, that they're requesting every county to apply up to $5 million so that they can utilize those funds, because they also have to use them. And so we're hoping that we can apply again and apply for that freezer that you're talking about.
Judge, if, coming here to the court, excuse me, authority, can we buy it and do you first get it from the OLS when it comes here?
I mean, we.
So we get it out, so we can say.
We could, we can always purchase the equipment, Commissioner, but it's just, it's, you're, you're risking if, that they don't give it to us. So I, I would highly recommend that we apply for it and, and see if we get it, and if we don't, then at that time, we can have that discussion for Dimon County to buy it out of Dimon County Budget Fund. But I would highly suggest for us to apply for and through the OLS.
Can you purchase anything before the grant is approved?
That's what I'm saying, that's why I was asking.
No, we're not gonna do that, Mr. Pereira.
That's why I was asking.
I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.25 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of the MOU with Carrizo Springs CASD and Dimon County Fire. It's my understanding that Commissioner Carmona, Alonso Carmona, did advise my office that you did have an opportunity to review this document and you had your blessing on it, correct, Commissioner?
Correct.
So with that being said, I've reviewed it myself. It's your standard MOU that's been in place before, other than the exception of the changes from administration from, we have a interim superintendent. Of course, the judge has changed, the sheriff has changed, and the chief of police has changed. We do have Mr. Carmona still as the fire chief, so aside from those administrative name changes, everything else stands, so. I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
We have one opposition. We have Commissioner Juan Carmona opposed.
May I ask a question? I was.
I'm gonna go ahead and open it back up. Go ahead, Commissioner.
The reason I'm against it is because they don't want Dimon County to respond to any fires in the city. And according to the map, the high school, all the schools are at the, at the city limit, so we're gonna have conflicts again. If they respond to a fire, God willing, there will never be a fire, but it, it, to me, they don't want the county to respond.
Who doesn't want the county?
The city.
But this is with, with the school and the school.
The school is under the jurisdiction of the city.
I understand that, Commissioner, but if the school is requesting the assistance of the Dimon County Fire Police and they have to be there, the only time that fire will not be there is if the school says, we don't want you here, and at that point, it's interference with the investigation. But I, I mean, if we have an emergency like that and there's our children, our, our community that's at risk, is at safety, I don't see why anybody would want to be fighting about whether the county is there or the city's there or anybody else is there.
When I was asked by the city manager, they asked if I was paging the city first on the city fire, but I told them, yes, normally, but if we don't get a response, we page out the county. And she had no issues with that on it, but I did tell them that they're being concerned, they thought we're just paging the county fire department, county fire department, which I did tell them, we are paging the city, but if there is no response, then we turn around and page out the county. Because they were saying, let them respond first, you know, but if, you know, we're out there with citizens and, you know, if we don't, you know, if they're not responding to the radio, we'll go to the next one, we'll page out the county. But the MOU mainly is, yes.
You know, it shouldn't be responding, correct? That's what he said.
He's saying that according, he's saying according to Chief Galván, that Dimon County should not be responding.
On that, city matters never talk, when they discuss it, I would need something in writing, because even, I mean, because we're on the 911, I have to page whoever we're gonna page out, you know, for that one reason. But the MOU mainly is for.
But this MOU is mainly for assistance, so, correct, it's for assistance, correct. But this MOU is not for you yet. This one's for the fire.
It's right.
But it, it, it comes part of the ICS system, the incident command system. Whoever gets first there or whatever, they kind of relinquish their, they relinquish their station due to the fact that if you have somebody hired with more ICS than what the other fire chief has, then the first, that fire chief takes over. Because it comes all to incident command. Yes, there was a comment made that we, the reason that they didn't want us to, oh, the city is looking for the fire chief. Because we would have called them out to the calls that we were having out there. And the reason that I usually don't call the actuary and Carrizo Springs is because I don't wanna leave their towns unprotected. They have very minimum equipment to fight a fire and we're blessed that we have the equipment that we have. But I would, I always rely on the neighboring counties, because they're very respectful to our request. But incidents happen here and there where they weren't around and then I got blamed for it and it's like, no, it didn't happen that way.
Thank you. Thank you. 3.26 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of the MOU with Carrizo Springs CISD and Dimmitt County Sheriff's Department. Again, I've reviewed this MOU, so has the sheriff. This one is in regards to the sheriff's department, Commissioner Juan responding or assisting. As you know, the city of Carrizo has a marshal and two deputy marshals. So the manpower and the force of the Dimmitt County Sheriff's Office, obviously, is needed. And this is again for assistance only. It's not that the sheriff's office is in charge, but just for assistance. And I think for the most part, from what I've seen since being in office, y'all have had a fine, good working relationship with Arnold and the marshals, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion?
Sure.
My question is.
Go ahead.
They include the police department, correct? Their, their.
Well, yes, yes.
The police department. Just you two, they include everybody.
It's the, the school police department. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.27 Discussion and Appropriate Action County Judge Marta Ponce to attend the 2024 Legislative Conference on August 28th through the 30th through 2024. Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? I do, commissioners recommended or advised for you guys to go ahead. And also, if you guys are going to attend, like you did last year, the rooms are filling up pretty fast. So it's just a recommendation, if you guys want to put that in as well.
Thank you.
That's for the summer?
That's for the one that we went in, in the end of August, September, Commissioner Carmona. The one in Austin, the Legislative Update Conference. So it, it's, the rooms are filling up pretty fast from what I was advised. So we went ahead and kind of just did it ahead of time. But all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries through. Commissioner Urenda, is that an aye? Because Commissioner said he's the only one voting. Thank you, sir.
They went over here.
You have to say aye.
I said I'd be alive.
Thank you. 3.28 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for County Judge Marta Ponce and EMC Selena Rodriguez to attend the Texas Emergency Management on May 27th through the 2024 Fort Worth, Texas. Thank you, Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.29 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Auditor Carlos Pereira to attend the County Auditors Association on the Room Training on February 21st through the 23rd in Mineral Wells, Texas. That's for tomorrow?
Yes.
Is, do I have a motion?
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Cindy Montes to reinstate notary for the Dimmitt County Sheriff's Office for this particular item. I did discuss with Ms. Montes. Essentially, Ms. Montes has been one of several notaries for the sheriff's office since her tenure in the sheriff's department. So at this point, her notary is up for renewal, and that's what this item is for. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Eric, thank you. You have a comment? Oh, I thought you said you had a comment. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion?
Judge, I was, I was saying to Ms. Montes that we did her report last.
We did.
But thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 1.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Will Use Funds From Forfeiture Account To Pay The Remaining Balance For Bodywork Cameras Grant 4755301 Awarded $60,481.76.
Judge, this one, we have brought in from Motorola, I believe. There were 25 cameras, the total was going to be $374,000. With the grant paid to $60,314. I did, I talked to Sheriff Salinas, where he get his room, and we're able to get 35 cameras for $60,397.
Sheriff, I got that. I don't know if it was a text or an email from you in regards to that for the body cameras where Sabala County uses them? Is that, is that the one? Perfect. So my question, Sheriff, is, I think that as the, as the budget and executive officer of the county, I think it's pertinent, it's important that we are, you know, financially conservative and that we try to find the best or the quality equipment that will serve its purpose, but also we have to keep in mind the budget of the county because of our taxpayers. I personally think that it's a great idea for us to go with this new quote of the $60,397 as opposed to paying $370-something thousand. I, I thank you and I commend you for, you know, speaking to your colleagues in other counties, other sheriffs, and getting this quote, because I mean, that's huge. I mean, that's $310,000 less.
That's $25.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just one vote, but I'm going to request, commissioners, that we approve for the sheriff to go with Alvarado Emergency Lighting for $60,397.75, which would be paid out of the grant at no cost to Dimmitt County taxpayers as opposed to the $374,685 that was originally quoted.
And this one, Judge, with Motorola, we have hearing subscriptions who have to pay hearing. And the other company is just downloading software to the system.
To the system.
Subscription required.
Is that doc, that software system, sheriff included in this $60,000?
Yes, it's included.
Okay. Questions?
To move.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Commissioner Urenda.
Who was it, Commissioner Urenda?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I agree with the Honor's comments about the pricing. I just have a question on these body cams, since they're required to provide now into the county as the district attorney copies of the videos and sunrise. Is it compatible to the systems we have now so that discovery can be sent to the prosecutors?
His question is, is that this new system that you're trying to acquire, is it going to be compatible to the system that, as you're aware, you have to give discovery to the county attorney and district attorney?
You can download and save it to the computer and put it in a CD and forward over. It'll be compatible, as which Motorola, you have to get the software for it. But you'll be able to.
And it should be a benefit to the prosecutors.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 1.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for the Sheriff, Chris Castaneda, to attend Texas and Southwest Border Sheriff's Coalition Meeting on April 3rd and 5th in El Paso, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Sheriff's Report, Monthly Report.
Judge, also in this one, I did complete the Rachel Poronin report, and I attached a copy.
Thank you. That had not been done in a long time. Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff, as you heard, Commissioners Court, we approved for the speed mile, the mileage, excuse me, the speed limit at Industrial Boulevard, which is a county road to be reduced. If you can, if you can just advise your, your officers, because I know that's a concern that Commissioner Juan had, to just be conscientious of not only them, but also regular constituents or just people in general that are using that area, that the speed limit has and is going to change, so just so everybody's aware.
Yeah, once it changes, I'll have somebody work right under too.
Please.
Yes.
Because we do have, especially right now with basketball going on, we have an increase of traffic there in regards to the families and kids using that area. So if we can just be aware.
And also, sir, on the burn man, we have five that were up here, but it's not including the constable. I know the constable did have a few citations also.
Sheriff, some of these officers that you have here, are they traffic or are they just for your officers?
Some are regular, regular deputies.
Oh, you have more than that, correct?
Yes. And some of them are investigators, and I have three that are CFOs. So they're not all going to be on the.
The reason in this case, because right here, you've got some of them, correct? But I suppose probably you have 32.
I should have 32.
32.
So for us to know, maybe you ought to put down all of these investigators, investigation, whatever, just so we can have record of it. Because it looks like these are the only people that are working.
Well, I mean, the other ones are working the pages and everything.
Right, that's why, that's why I'm saying. You would see, you would say, well, your Carmona's only got 10 workers, and only two are working.
I can get you a list on the other one with, on the calls, that the burglaries, everything, I can get you where, like, that was a breakdown there. Each officer has, I brought that.
Just the officer, investigators, all that.
I'll, I'll give with the company, add them on here, because it's just for the citation. I'm not on here because I don't have the, for this one yet, the citation. But I can add them, I'll say we can add them on there.
Is that where you know what they're doing, who they are, right?
Yeah, but I'll give with the other categories. I can give with the cases they're working on.
We don't want to know who to give citation or.
Oh, no, but the investigators, I'll get them, the cases that they're working on.
Right, thank you.
Can you just keep your uses?
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't do that.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the sheriff's monthly report?
Motion to approve, Judge.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. 5.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Status Report on Utilities. We have a report here. Mr. Hyman, what's the projected status for the CSA?
Excuse me, Judge.
On which one? On the sheriffs? Give me one second, Mr. Hyman. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. And a second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Status Report for Utility and Regulatory Department, Mr. Hyman.
They don't know you.
They don't know you?
They're working the landstone right now.
Okay.
Underway, underway, on the parking lot.
But what's the status on like when we, when we can open the CSA building?
The landstone's been worked. The hot mix is next, next week, they start laying hot mix. He was kind of waiting for warmer weather and showed it to be in the 80s. We'll be laying hot mix next week. It'll take him a week to lay down. Let's do that next part. Yes, the strike.
Commissioner, are they already finished that fence? I saw some metal sticking out.
That wasn't part of the deal, probably, to wear it.
Okay.
And the reason why I finished that should be because of other.
Dirt and everything.
Right.
Any questions for Mr. Hyman? I will entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Further discussion?
Judge, I advise Commissioner Urenda that, for him to put the numbers. I hate to be calling him all the time, because they call me from roundage.
Put what numbers?
They are like, Mr. Manuel is a supervisor or whatever he is, and then whoever works for the water department. They call me, and sometimes someone, I always get upset because I called. I don't know about, which they call.
Issues, I don't know, there's no pressure.
To put a phone number?
Phone number for Manuel, Mr. included. Like a private phone? The phone number.
Now, if they're using their personal phone, then you need to get them county phones. That way, they can answer them.
There is a county phone.
I, I got him.
Yeah, he has a county, he has a county phone. We pay for a county phone.
Who put it, who put it up there?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 6.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from County Treasurer Mr. Oscar Ortiz for the month of January 2024.
Do y'all have copies of the reports?
Yes, sir.
The bottom part was cut out, Mr. Ortiz.
On the, on the first page.
And you just.
On the total account, on the total, total amounts, yes. We don't have numbers.
I can read that out to you, or I can just provide?
You can read it out to us, and then we can, you can provide us a copy at a later time.
Okay.
So for the first one, beginning total account funds, it looks like it's a $12 million, but we can't see. And receipts, reimbursements, and transfers total? And expenses, CDs, and transfers? And for monthly interest earnings, ah, oh, no. Go ahead. And for treasurer's balance?
And also, the one thing I wanted to add, there was three accounts that were negative, but that's just because the checks got printed on the last.